This meeting is being recorded. God damn it Instagram moved everything and I'm still confused. Add a title. Free ASCP. Study session. Alright, let's get it. Cup to go here, I need my live, I need all my lives to go right here. Oh, bumble clubs. Okay. Alright, let me go into the school community and just make sure that there's nobody pending. So I can let them in. Alright, I got three memberships requen- pending requested. Okay. So, good afternoon, good evening to everyone that is here. We have sixteen people in the Zoom. That's great. Um, for everyone that's on live on TikTok and Instagram, if you go ahead and go to the link. That's on my Instagram and Facebook stories right now, you can get into the live. Um, you'll actually be able to see my screen. We're gonna go onto Lab CE and do practice questions together. Um, yesterday we did what? Microchem and a mix of both. And then today we're gonna focus on hematology. So I'm gonna pop up Lab CE and if you want to actually like see the questions, just. Apply to get into the school community. Um, let me see if I can actually pin the Zoom link. Maybe I can pin the Zoom link? Oh shit, no, I can't do that cuz then I would have to exit out the live. Well. In the meantime. Losing the chat. Oh, that's my note taker. Um, alright, so let me just pop up Lab CE and let's just get it going. Ooh. It has been a morning. I'm not gonna lie, guys. I just got out of therapy maybe like thirty minutes ago and my energy is just like. You know when you come out of therapy and you're just like, goddamn. Goddamn, goddamn. It's, it just takes you, it takes you for a loop. Um. I do a very specialized therapy called neuroemotional technique and it takes a lot out of me. And I probably shouldn't have done it like before. The study session, but you know, it happens. I needed to get therapized today. Um. Yeah, I was doing training jujitsu this morning and I had like. A moment after cuz it was like competition style training and I was going pretty hard and I was getting tossed around by. Very strong and technical men and I just, I don't know, feelings of helplessness come up and I'm. Sure, a lot of us have gone through the same thing, but just. To share my experience with everyone, just. If you need to cry, cry, it's okay. And if you need to talk to a therapist, talk to a therapist. It's totally acceptable. Don't feel no type away, just. Go get help. Alright, so let's share my screen. Y'all could share, I mean, y'all could see my screen. We're gonna do this in review mode. Let me pop up the chat over here, chat. Over here, let's try to get through twenty-five questions. I need to pop up this brightness. This shit is low. Alright, so today we're doing hematology. Alright, so the first question is, the most common forms of hereditary cteroblastic anemia or SA are due to which of the following? A defective X-linked recessive gene, a defective Y-linked dominant gene. An amino acid substitution on the beta chain or an underproduction of alpha chains? And if anybody is unmuted, just remember to mute yourself. So what two can we at least get rid of? Like hereditary cteroblastic anemia? What two can we? Oh wait, where's everyone? Here we go. Sorry, I was on the wrong chat. Um, alright, so for me, I'm looking at this. I don't necessarily remember everything about hereditary cteroblastic anemia cuz like who even knows that? But I know that amino acid substitution on the beta chain is gonna result in um, a hemoglobinopathy like sickle cell. Um, or a thalassemia and then an underproduction of the alpha chains is like an alpha thalassemia of some sort. So to me, I'm thinking it's either an X-linked or a Y-linked. To me, I would think that it's a recessive gene. It wouldn't necessarily be a dominant gene cuz it's like an anemia, right? Like if it's a disease normally, it's like a recessive gene. So for me, without having, without knowing anything about hereditary cteroblastic anemia. I would go with A, but let's check the answer and then we'll go into the explanation. Okay, and that is the correct answer. So you saw how I kinda broke that down? When you guys go through questions and you have no idea anything about something. Start to think like common sense. Okay, what do I know about some of the answer choices? The most common form of hereditary um, cteroblastic anemia is due to an X-linked recessive gene. Meaning it's on the X chromosome and it's a recessive gene, meaning it's. Something you'd have to have two recessive co- right? Two copies of in order for you to express that disease? This rules out the second answer option, right? Okay, so hemoglobinopathies are in many cases due to an amino acid substitution. Hemoglobin S and hemoglobin C are both examples of amino acid substitutions on the beta chain exactly as I said. So that's how, how, how I was eliminating C. And then. An underproduction of the alpha chains. An underproduction that occurs in alpha thalassemia as I was saying, so that brought me back to either A or B. And then knowing that an anemia, hereditary anemia would probably be. Be uh, because of a recessive gene. That's how I was able to get to that answer. So if we wanna go further into that, hereditary cter- cteroblastic anemia, hereditary cteroblastic anemia. Let's just find a little bit more about it. Let's look at images. I love who's ever paged this is. Um, okay, well, this isn't really telling me anything. Oh wait, what was this image? This osmosis page is like the best. Okay, Papa. Okay. Cteroblastic anemia. Oh damn, I gotta pay for this ass. Well, we know what cteroblasts or cterocytes look like, right? Ring cterocytes? Um, alright, let's not Cleveland Clinic. Oh lord, let's go to the NIH. Real quick, cteroblastic anemia is characterized by impaired iron utilization during erythropoiesis. So the production of red blood cells. They're not able to utilize the iron. The iron properly, which leads to ringed cteroblast, which is what I just sho- sho- showed on the screen. In the bone marrow, these ring cteroblasts are erythroid precursors with iron-laden mitochondria encircling the nucleus. So mitochondria, hey, 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 hey. Um, sorry, that's my cat. Um, mitochondria around the nucleus and there's iron all in the mitochondria, which makes it look like. Like there's like a ring around it. Does that make sense? Um, let's see, uh. Can be hereditary or acquired. Either microcytic or macrocytic. Well, that doesn't help. Depends on the specific genetic mutation and its effect on the red cell maturation and hemoglobin synthesis. Um, associated with normal to elevated iron levels. Unlike iron deficiency anemia, a notable type subtype is refractory anemia along with ring cteroblast or RARS. Falls under the myodoloid dysplastic syndrome spectrum. And then it's got a lot of ring cteroblasts and resistance to standard anemia treatments. So. You, um, when you, when you get these questions, definitely like do a little bit more research. Onto the next one. This image is from a patient with alpha thalassemia. Though not diagnostic for this condition, what morphology is present which would lead you to consider a quantitative disorder of hemoglobin synthesis? Basophilic stippling, stippling, codocytes, ovalocytes, or schistocytes? So, we are. I don't see any basophilic stippling on this page, although this is a horrendous slide. Codocytes, what are codocytes? What is the other name for codocytes? Targets, exactly. Ovalocytes? I mean, maybe. Maybe, definitely some target cells or codocytes. Schistocytes? I mean. Yeah, ish. This is a really bad picture. But alpha thalassemia, though not diagnostic for this condition, what morphology is present which would lead you to consider a quantitative? So the amount of. Like it's, it's less of an amount of hemoglobin that's being produced. And let's see what people are saying. B. C, D. Alright, Bs and Ds, we need, we need a tiebreaker. What's the last one? We got a B, alright. Oh, alright, let's just, let's try the B and see what we're talking about. So, looks like it's codocytes, which I, I honestly would not have guessed that. I, I might have gone schistocytes, but it's not like I'm seeing. A lot of them in order for me to be like. Okay, yeah, let me call it, but also too, what does, what do schistocytes have to do with quantitative disorders of hemoglobin synthesis? I don't know. Codocytes are typical erythrocyte morphology found in most thalassemias and hemoglobinopathies. Okay, cool, that doesn't really tell me anything, but alright. Basophilic stippling is a typical erythrocyte morphology found in most thalassemias, but it's not seen in this image, right? That's how I was able to rule that out. Ovalocytes are often found in conjunction with macrocytic cells. So you'd see it in megaloblastic anemia. What is a cause of megaloblastic anemia? Just pop quiz. What vitamin deficiency? Yeah, B twelve, exactly. Schistocytes are observed in this image but are not a typical erythrocyte morphology found in thalassemia. So now we know. Codocytes, target cells. They're very typical of thalassemias and hemoglobinopathies. Why they ask the question in this way um, is a little weird to me, but. I guess it's just saying, you know, what is typical of a patient with thalassemia? Codocytes. Ovalocytes we consider with megaloblastic anemia, schistocytes we would see. Um, like in patient in DIC, patient with some type of uh. Red cell destruction happening, right? Uh, like a delayed hemolytic transfusion reaction, something like that. And then basophilic stippling, you would see in thalassemias, but we don't see it in this image, so we couldn't call it basophilic stippling. Alright, let's see. A variety of additives are used in blood collection tubes. Which of the following additives prevents clotting by inhibiting thrombin and thromboplastin? Let's see. Thrombin and thromboplastin, everyone is saying, oh, sorry, I didn't read the answer choices. EDTA, gel, lithium or sodium heparin or sodium fluoride. Everyone is saying lithium and sodium heparin. I can concur with that. EDTA is not preventing thrombin to go into thrombin plastin. EDTA is doing what? Talked about this yesterday. EDTA, yep, it's chelating calcium. Gel, we're just separating coagulated blood from serum or the serum is leftover sodium fluoride. Um. Another, uh, it helps with preventing glycolysis. Right? And that was a level nine? What the fu- that's crazy. Alright, guys, y'all were sure on a level nine. We love this. So lithium, sodium heparin, uh, this goes for everybody. It's very important that you. Understand what tubes do what for what tests and why we use those tubes for those specific tests. So lithium sodium heparin is used to prevent clotting by inhibiting thrombin and thromboplastin. It's found in your green and light green tubes. EDTA, we know chelates calcium. Um, the gel tube is just a barrier, right? And sodium fluoride is uh, to inhibit glycolysis, right? Glycolysis is the metabolism of glucose by red cells. Okay, number four. In reference to semen analysis, microscopic examination, differentiation and enumeration of round cells. Which are often present in semen count are referred as. Are referred to as sperm vitality, seminal fluid fructose, white blood cells or bacteria. So in reference to semen analysis, microscopic examination, differentiation and enumeration of. Round cells, which are often present in semen count, in semen count are referred to as what? Sperm vitality, um, seminal fluid fructose, white blood cells and bacteria. We're all saying C. I would concur with C, although I've never called them round cells. It's kinda. I feel like this is antiquated, or maybe this is a new way that they're calling WBCs. It's like if you're seeing WBCs, you call them WBCs, you don't call them round cells. Um, sperm vitality is actually looking at the sperm itself. Seminal fluid fructose you'd run on, you know, whatever. Uh, SQ, whatever instrument you have. Um, and then bacteria, I mean, yeah, you might see that, but that's. I don't think that that's anything that we really enumerate. It's mostly. Uh, whites and the morphology and uh, the motility. I said, I went like this, the motility of the swimmers. Alright, so right, round cells refer to WBCs or immune, sorry, immune immature sperm cells in a semen sample. Isn't that interesting? These cells can be differentiated on a stained smear using one thousand X magnification. Or more precisely by performing a peroxidase assay. An increased number of WBCs presents, uh. An increased number of WBCs present indicates inflammatory conditions associated with infection or poor sperm quality. Sperm vitality and seminal fluid fructose are the types of additional testing done when abnormalities are suspected in sperm morphology and functionality. And then the presence of bacteria in a seminal anal- yeah, seminal analysis may be an indication of infection. And that was a level five. I hate doing semen analysis. Y'all already know how I feel about it. The following polypeptide chains are found in normal adult hemoglobin A. Alpha and gamma, alpha and delta. Beta and delta or alpha and beta. Hey, you guys are good, 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 good. Alright, so knowing your hemoglobins. Hemoglobin A, hemoglobin A two, hemoglobin F. Hemoglobin, um, C, S, H. All of that, you need to know the combinations of the globin chains. So a normal hemoglobin molecule is a tetramer. Meaning four. Um, four units made up of two alpha and two beta chains. Fetal hemoglobin is two alpha to gamma. A two is two alpha to delta. Beta and delta globin chains reside in close proximity on the same arm of chromosome eleven. Ooh, fun fact, you gotta know at the party. The two do not assort together. However, two delta and two alpha globin chains may form hemoglobin A two, just as I said. Oh wait, yeah, I just said that before. Only a limited amount of delta chain is synthesized, limiting the amount of hemoglobin A two in a normal adult hemoglobin A two accounts for about two point five percent of total adult hemoglobin. If you have four betas that come together. What is that one? What's the difference between hemoglobin Bart's and hemoglobin H? Hemoglobin constant spring, all of those, right? Anybody remember? Yeah, yeah, exactly. Exactly. Um, I like to say, um. What is it? Bart. Bart doesn't like babies, right? Cuz that's what you would see in, um, sorry, my cat is gonna be walking across the screen here. That's what you would see in like an alpha thalassemia, like a baby with alpha thalassemia. That's how I remember it. Yeah, fatalis hydrops, exactly. Which of the following factors require vitamin K for their synthesis in the liver? B. Anybody else concur? What are all of the vitamin K dependent factors? Name them. I think it's two, what is it? Two, seven, nine, ten? Yeah, yeah, somebody said it for me. Two, seven, nine, ten. Alright, so here we go. Factor seven is a member of the prothrombin group, which includes factors two, seven, nine, ten. Protein C, protein S in this group. Uh, this group requires vitamin K for synthesis in the liver. Factors eight. Sorry, thirteen, eight and one are members of the fibrinogen group. Which also includes factor five. These factors are consumed in clotting absent from serum and do not require vitamin K for synthesis. Very important that you know the ones that are vitamin K dependent for synthesis. Very important that you know, um. The intrinsic and extrinsic pathways, right? Tell me, uh, the intrinsic pathway. Just the factor numbers if we can remember. And extrinsic pathway. Twelve, eleven, nine, eight, seven and three. And if you don't know. I know I posted this in my. Inner circle community. If we go to the classroom and we go to hematology. And we go to the coagulation cascade, there's a whole nice little thing here. Of how you remember the names and the factor numbers. As well as I have a little drawing that I actually used in school. This is your coagulation, right? Extrinsic, intrinsic. All of the um, disorders linked to like different hemophilias. Very important. Okay, next. Anemia of chronic inflammation, also known as anemia of chronic disease, can be caused by all of the following mechanisms except what? EPO produc- production inhibited by cytokines, direct cytokine inhibition of erythropoiesis. Um, decreased ferritin or shortened erythrocyte survival. Oh. C, 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 decreased ferritin. What is EPO? Tell me what is EPO? As I take a sip of my. Japanese green tea that I've been meaning to drink. EPO is. Erythropoietin, yes, exactly. Isn't that on the list of like anti-doping things? Like you're not supposed to take EPO if you're like an athlete? Anyways, everyone's saying decreased ferritin, let's do it. Okay. So this was a level five. Anemia of chronic inflammation, also known as anemia of chronic disease. Can be caused by all of the following mechanisms except what? So it can be caused, well, let's read the feedback here. Cytokine inhibition of erythropoietin production, direct cytokine inhibition of erythropoiesis. And shortened erythrocyte survival are all mechanisms that can lead to anemia of chronic inflammation. Of the answer options listed, only decreased ferritin is not a mechanism related to anemia of chronic disease. Iron plays a role. In anemia of chronic inflammation, but it is not due to decreased ferritin levels. The block of iron from macrophages. From, uh, sorry, the block of iron from macrophages due to increased hepcidin can lead to anemia of chronic inflammation. Ferritin levels in anemia of chronic inflammation are normal or increased. Right? What's the difference between ferritin and transferrin? Tell me. Which one stores and which one transports? Yeah, exactly. Good. Very important that you know the difference between. Ferritin and transferrin in relation to not only like. Uh, iron studies for your chemistry questions, but also for your anemias in hematology. That's another thing I have in uh. The inner circle community. And I also think that I posted it in the uh, the free community. So anemias. I have all the anemias, anemias, anemias here. And on one side it tells you the name, the description of it, and then. On the side is what you're going to see, the, the morphology and the lab results, right? Think at the bottom I might have anemia, yep, anemia of chronic disease here. Right? Normal to high ferritin. So very important that you utilize this chart when you're doing your questions if you're not sure. The more that you look at the questions, look back at the answer, look back at the, sorry, look at the chart, look at the question, look at the chart, look at the question. You're going back and forth, back and forth until you don't even need to look at the chart because you've seen it so many times, it's like. Photographically memorized in your brain, right? Onto the next one. Run a roll, guys. Alpha thalassemia is defined as what? The production of an abnormal form of hemoglobin due to the substitution of an amino acid in the alpha chain? The decrease in rate of production of hemoglobin A due to a substitution of amino acids in the alpha chain? The decrease rate, uh, decrease in the rate. The decrease in the rate of production of alpha chains due to a partial or total deletion of the genetic code. Or the decrease in the rate of production of alpha chains due to a mutation on chromosome eleven. So which ones can we get rid of at least? Right, okay, yeah. Well, everyone just like knows this off books. This is great. So for those who don't know. Alpha thalassemia, if we go back to our uh, thalassemia chart here. Where did my thalassemia chart go? Um, using this chart is really good cuz you can see. What the fuck is a thalassemia and how is that different from sickle cell? Thalassemia is the reduced or absence of the production of the hemoglobin chains due to a genetic inheritance of the alleles for the hemoglobin chains. Which means. There's a deletion or. Um, partial or total deletion in the genetic code, right? So. Alpha thalassemia silent carrier versus mitrate versus disease versus constant spring versus alpha thalassemia major, very important. Alright, so let me go back to this. Um, so it's not an abnormal form of the hemoglobin, right? Um. And it's not decreased rate of production of hemoglobin A due to a substitution of amino acid on the alpha chain. It's really best described as the rate of decrease in the rate of production of the alpha chains because of a genetic. Yeah, something, something wrong with the genetics is going on, whether it's. One out of the four parts being deleted. Or totally deleted, right? So this was a level five. And the feedback says thalassemia in general is the decrease in the rate of production of a globin chain due to a partial or total deletion of the genetic code. So in alpha thalassemia, this deletion affects alpha globin chain synthesis at one or more of the four gene loci on chromosome sixteen. Substitution of amino acids on alpha or beta chains can result in hemoglobinopathies such as hemoglobin C and hemoglobin S. And the genes that control the production of the alpha globin chains are located on chromosome sixteen. The genes that control the produ- production. Of beta globin chains are located on chromosome eleven. Another fun fact you need to know at the party. Alpha globin chains are on sixteen, beta globin chains are chromosome eleven. So, this is your definition of alpha thalassemia. To determine if an elevated APTT is caused by a factor deficiency or a factor inhibitor, when the PT is normal, the first step would be to do what? Mix one part patient plasma, one part normal pooled plasma, and then repeat the APTT. Mix one part patient plasma and one part normal aged plasma and repeat the APTT. Perform a factor nine assay to see if it is a factor nine deficiency or perform a test for lupus anticoagulant. So this has to do with mixing studies, mixing studies. And we're getting a lot of As in the chat. Good job, good shit. This is a level three. So first step. In this case is to begin the mixing study protocol, right? Where the patient sample is mixed with normal pooled plasma. To determine whether or not there is a correction of the APTT results upon rerunning. If the specimen corrects, a factor deficiency should be suspected, suspected. At this point, specific factor assay should be performed to identify and quantitate the specific factor deficiency. If the specimen does not correct, a circulating factor inhibitor should be suspected and specific tests. To identify the inhibitor should be performed, right? So if we do a mixing study. And um, we pull the patient sample with normal pooled plasma, right? We rerun it and it corrects, meaning that it's a normal, within the normal range. We're thinking that it's a factor deficiency, but if it does not correct. We're thinking there's some type of inhibitor that's preventing it from having a normal, like going through the coagulation process properly. Does that make sense to everybody? Now it's just mixing one part of the patient plasma with one part of normal aged plasma, produce false results as time. Degrades the coagulation protein. So definitely not aged plasma. We, we, we need fresh, normal pooled plasma. Performing a factor nine assay or lupus anticoagulant test should only be performed after identifying the cause of the increased PTT, APTT. That make sense to everybody? Excuse me. Alright, so we have, the large blue staining cells represented in the photo micrographs comprise fifty percent of the total white blood cell count. Which of the following conditions is this peripheral picture, or sorry, peripheral blood picture most consistent with? Infectious mononucleosis, chronic lymphocytic leukemia, acute lymphoblastic leukemia, or a bacterial infection? Alright, infectious mono cuz we are seeing. Lots of reactive limbs. If this was CLL, what might you see if it was CLL? CLL, yep, smudge cells. We see tortoiseshell or soccer ball nuclei, nu- nucleuses. Li- limbs and lots of them, right? If this was ALL, what would you see? It was ALL, what might you see? ALL, we're seeing blasts. Pure blasts, right? Bacterial infection, probably see more neutrophils. Alright. Alright, so this is a lot. Level difficulty of five. Right? These are reactive lymph, irregular with a round elongated stretched nucleus that can be notched or indented. Chromatin paired, pattern is variable. It can be more condensed like a mature lymphocyte. Or fine resembling a blast. Nucleoli can be visible. The cytoplasm is dark blue. Basophilic can be darker at the periphery of the cell. The cytoplasm is dark blue basophilic can be darker at the periphery of the cell, right? Like this one. Darker at the periphery. Um occasional vacuoles and azirophilic granules are sometimes present. See some vacuoles. I mean, maybe this one kinda has, I, this is really hard to see. Kinda has some granules. Alright, so few reactive limbs can be seen, da da da. Infectious mono was caused by EBV Epstein Barr virus. Usually affects younger adults. EBV infects your B limbs, but the reactive lymph seen in the peripheral blood are mainly CD eight positive cytotoxic T cells, T lymphocytes. During an EBV infection, greater than twenty percent reactive lymphotites are, lymphotites, lymphocytes are typically seen. So lymph seen in the CLL are small and mature with scant cytoplasm. Um chromatin shows a characteristic block type pattern. So what does that mean? CLL under the microscopy images. See if we can get a nice picture of a CLL. I mean shit, this one like, this is pretty characteristic. You just see hella smudge cells. This one, that's a good one. No, it's not really a good one for the nucleus nuclei. Oh, this is a good one. You see how this kinda gives like tortoiseshell? Y'all know what a tortoise, like a turtle shell? It's giving turtle shell, it's giving soccer ball. That, this is like a clear cut CLL lymph. Persons like sixty-five year old male? Probably, probably a CLL. And then ALL. Um, these cells do not resemble lymphoblasts inconsistent with ALL, right? So let's look at ALL. ALL, I'm gonna chop you up Zion if you don't stop scratching me. Just blast, 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 blast. Big, oh, this is me! I popped up on a Google search. That's crazy. Um, so I have ALL on my uh page. I had just posted about that. Oh, this is nice. Well, it's not really nice, but you know, as a scientist, this is really pretty to look at, but obviously not good for the patient. Everyone gets on me when I say that. I'm like, ooh, this is so pretty. And they're like, but somebody's dying. I'm like, I know, but I know that it's horrible for the patient, but what a blessing it is that I'm able to see this and tell their doctor like that, like the pathologist or tell the pathologist that they need to tell the doctor to do something. She's like, you famous, famous. Just a little bit. Alright, so we have um a white blood cell count is performed on a blood specimen from a newborn using a hematology analyzer that does not have the capability to detect and quantify NRBCs or nucleated red blood cells. The WBC count that is reported by the analyzer is twenty-eight point two and it's flagged for a manual diff. Upon review of the blood film, more than six NRBCs that resemble the cells shown in the image were identified in the one hundred WBC differential. What action should be taken? Report the automated white cell count and the manual diff results immediately to the physician. Count the number of cells that resemble the cells in this image per one hundred WBCs and subtract that number from the WBC count as ah sorry, that was reported by the analyzer. Count the number of cells that resemble the cells in this image per one hundred WBCs and compute for the corrected WBC count using the formula. Total WBCs times a hundo over a hundred plus the number of NRBCs or add the NRBCs to WBC count. Yeah, let's just add it to the WBC count. Alright, we're getting a lot of Cs in the chat. Cs in the chat is correct. So this is a level two. NRBCs, they're normally present in the blood of newborns for sure. That's totally normal because their bone marrow was like, whoa! I was just in the womb and now I'm coming out and I actually have to do something. This is crazy. So if the hematology analyzer that used in uh that is used includes all NRBCs in its WBC count, a manual diff must be performed on the stain smear. If more than five NRBCs are seen per one hundred, the total WBC count must be corrected using the following formula. Very important that you know your um this corrected WBC count number of NRBCs, blah de blah de blah, take a screenshot of that or write it down that you need to know it. Never have I ever really had to do this or I I might have done it like in my as a baby tech, but I don't, I don't remember doing that recently. Um, yeah, WBC count must not be reported to the physician until his correction is made, which is true. In the flow cytometric analysis, which of the following data can be collected? Anisocytosis due to presence of micro sites or macro sites? Hemoglobin and hematocrit levels? Size and granularity of the cell by forward and side scatters or presence of abnormal erythrocyte inclusions? Getting a lot of Cs in the chat. Want to see is in the chat. Alright, good shit. Yo, every time I look over, Gus, I see you join my freaking live, bro. What the hellie? Sorry, I missed your call. Alright, so this is correct. In flow cytometric analysis, so in flow cytometry, what data is collected? So as the cell exit, as cells exit the flow cell in single file. So imagine it's going through this little line. You're squeezing in line to go see your favorite artist. You are a cell. You're intersecting a laser and you're emitting a certain data. The intrinsic cell characteristics, which I I don't necessarily know what they mean by that, but size, the granularity, extrinsic cell characteristics and surface antigens. It says fluorescence emitted by the MOAB found to the specific bound to the specific antigens. Okay. So flow cytometry is used to characterize nucleated cells. Spherocytosis is a detective microscopic analysis, right? Um, let's see. Where does it say anything about spherocytosis? Spherocytosis is detected by microscopic analysis of smear and careful analysis of red cell indices. I don't see this has anything else. Spherocytosis. Hemoglobin is measured by the cell counter using a spectrophotometer and hematocrit is derived from the red cell count and MCV or mean corpuscular volume. Abnormal cell inclusions are detected by microscopic analysis of blood smear. So size and granularity of the cell by forward and side scatters plotting, plotting it, whatever. And then um anisocytosis is and the presence of abnormal erythrocyte inclusions are found on your uh like you just need to look at it under the scope and then hemoglobin and hematocrit levels are done on the machine. Hemoglobin is you uh counted by a spectrophotometer and then hematocrit is derived from the red cell count and the MCV. What level is that? Level two. Identify the nucleated blood cell. If any of you get this wrong, I'm jumping through the screen and chopping you up. Know your cells. If you don't know your cells, slicing you in your throat. I shouldn't say that online, but whatever. The correct answer is eosinophil. I should have like described the cell to you guys on live that are uh that you guys can't see, but it is um a granulocyte with orange reddish pinkish um granules, dark purple nucleus, two lobes. We know what a lymph looks like. We know what a neutrophil looks like. We know what a monocyte looks like. Can anyone describe the difference between a pro, a mylo, and a meta? I'm just kidding. We don't need to go over that right now, but knowing your cell lineage is very important. Which of the following processes can lead to the formation of microclots in a patient specimen that is collected in a tube containing EDTA anticoagulant? Failing to invert the tube after specimen collection, filling the tube as full as the vacuum in the tube allows, inverting the tube five to ten times after specimen collection or using the EDTA tube for an automated platelet count. So what can lead to the formation of microclots in an EDTA tube? I agree. Failing to invert. Yeah, that's the whole, the whole reason why we invert. We want to prevent clots, microclots and clots. We want to prevent all of that. So failing to invert, delayed inversions, um inadequate inversions of the tube containing EDTA can cause formation of microclots. This can result in a falsely decreased platelet count, right? Because the plates are coming together causing this clot. Other choices that are listed are all acceptable practices and they will not cause the formation of microclots in an EDTA tube. Okay. Ooh, look at this one. The genetic analysis of a patient suspected of having beta thalassemia resulted in the pattern shown. This, the nurses should see this question and answer. I agree. If there are any nurses in this chat right now, this is for you. Well, that one was for you. This drawing most likely depicts which of the following, sorry, depicts which beta chain genotype? Beta thalassemia minor, beta thalassemia intermediate, beta thalassemia major, or delta beta thalassem- delta beta thalassemia minor. So if we're looking at this, it looks like the beta is chopped in half. Right? So there's what I would think is like a partial deletion of one of the beta globin chains. So one out of the four is gone. So what would that result in? All the other ones look pretty alive and round and well to me. Yeah, I might go with uh beta thalassemia minor. Yeah, hell yeah. So in beta thalassemia minor, one beta gene locus is partially deleted or inactive. In this picture, one can see that the second pattern has a partial beta pattern approximately half, representing the absence of one beta gene, right? Beta thalassemia intermediate would result in the deletion or inactivity of three beta gene loci, and then major beta thalassemia major would have no beta gene present or active resulting in the absence of the beta pattern. And then delta beta thalassemia would have the deletions or absence of a portion of both delta and beta gene pattern, patterns, right? This is gamma. This is delta. So delta and beta. This is what? Epsilon? Alright, that was a level five. Alright, the bone marrow begins producing cells in the blank month of fetal life. First, fourth to fifth, sixth, or eighth. This is another fun fact you need to know at the party. Fourth to fifth month fetal life. Oh, Media Lab, do not do me like this. Dude, Media Lab is some trash sometimes. Yes, this is correct. So bone marrow begins producing cells in the fourth to fifth month of fetal life. That is the correct answer. Liver begins producing cells in the first month. The spleen produces cells by the second month. And then by the sixth month, hematopoiesis is in decline in both the spleen and liver. And by the eighth month, spleen is no longer inactive for hematopoiesis. But in the fourth to fifth month, the bone marrow starts doing its thing like it should. The erythrocyte inclusions, which are thin, red, purple staining strands, usually found in figure eight shapes, are called what? Basophilic stippling, Cabot rings, Papenheimer bodies, or Heinz bodies? Dude, you guys are so good, like, I just wanna guys are great. So Cabot rings, rare erythrocyte inclusions thought to be made of mitotic spingle, spingle, spindle remnants. The inclusions have characteristic eight, figure eight shape. They're found in various conditions, including myelodysplastic syndrome and megaloblastic anemia, which we talked about was caused by vitamin B twelve folate. Um deficiency, right? Basophilic stippling. Multiple inclusion seen inside an RBC consisting of RNA. These inclusions can be uh seen in lead intoxication intoxication and thalassemia. Papenheimer bodies, known as siderotic granules. What is going on? Um, there are RBC inclusions that stain purple, uh blue purple on the right stain. Granules are also positively stained with the iron stain Prussian blue. These inclusions can be seen post splenectomy in hemolytic anemias, sideroblastic anemia, megaloblastic anemia, and hemoglobinopathy. So you'll often see Papenheimer bodies in all types of shit. Heinz bodies. Um Heinz, there are also dark blue purple inclusions, de nature hemoglobin when using a super vital stain such as pneumothylene blue. So it's important that you know Papenheimer bodies, RBC inclusions, um positively stained with Prussian blue. Take, taking these big um these, these big key words is important, right? Basophilic stippling, RNA, Heinz bodies, supervital stain, pneumothylene blue, G six PD deficiency, hemoglobinopathies, right? Um, I think I might have a chart of what you would call it's inclusions, RBC inclusions. Yes, little masita. Yeah, here, right? Basophilic stippling. I drew this actually. Howell Jolly, Papenheimer, siderocytes, sideroblast, blah de blah de blah de blah. Zion, if you don't get out of the camera. Alright. Let's see. The vascular system contributes to hemostasis in all of the following ways except what? Production of tissue factor, diversion of blood flow around the damaged vessel, contraction of vessels, providing smooth endothelial surface. The vascular system contributes to hemostasis in all of the following ways except what? Production of tissue factor, diversion of blood flow around the damaged vessel, contraction of vessels, or providing smooth endothelial surface. We got two Ds. Does anyone else concur with that? D or A? Getting some As. Alright, so we're eliminating B and C. Cause the vascular system does divert, I don't, does it divert blow, a bl- blow, whoa. Divert blood flow around the damaged vessel? I know it like, like the vasoconstriction happens for sure, contraction of vessels for surely. Hemostasis includes blood flowing normally, which the smooth endothelium does, is what Kennedy, Kennedy says. I think it does provide a smooth endothelial, yeah. I don't know that the vascular system produces tissue factor. So I might go A on this one. Oh, no, it was E. Okay. So the correct answer is providing a smooth endothelial surface. A smooth on damage endothelial surface discourages hemostasis. How does the vascular system contribute to hemostasis? Oh, okay. Damaged endothelium of vessel secretes lipoprotein called tissue factor, which can initiate coagulation. Alright, another fun fact we need to know at the party is that your damaged endoth- duh, Maryland tissue factor is what? Isn't that like factor three or factor seven? Hemostasis is stopping the blood flow. Right? Like blood stasis is flow. Contribute to hemostasis. Um physiological responses of damaged vessels, which help in hemostasis, include diversion of blood flow and contraction of the vessel. So in this case, hold on. I think that this question is worded weird. I'm a little confused. Anybody else a little confused by this question? Answer makes sense. I was on the wrong train of thought. Yes, okay. Hemostasis. Oh, I can't even freaking spell hemostasis. Lord Jesus. Yeah, the question is a little weird. Bodies process for stopping bleeding from a damaged blood vessel. Let's just get that right. So the vascular system contributes to stopping bleeding from a damaged blood vessel in all of the following ways except what? It produces tissue factor. It diverts blood flow around the damaged blood vessel. It contracts the vasoconstrictin- constriction, but it does not provide a smooth endothelial surface, right? It wouldn't want to to do, this is like, why, why do they even give us like a weird question like this? It wouldn't want to do that because see, provide, yeah, exactly. If you provide a smooth endothelial surface, it's not gonna stop the bleeding. Yeah, that part. Thank you, Miss Lean. I appreciate that. Alright, good shit. We got two CSF specimens that were sent to the lab with the following results. Tube number one is an eleven thousand two hundred RBC per microliter. Tube number two is three hundred RBC per microliter. The results on these CSF specimens are indicative of what? So tube number one has eleven thousand RBCs. Tube number two has three hundred. What at least can we get rid of? Oh, well, everyone is very sure that it's C. I said, oh, I didn't read the answer choices to you guys. Yeah, on TikTok, can you guys report that account, please, and thank you, Mr. Ben? Anybody who knows that account that's reposting my shit and I've literally commented on all of their pages and DM them multiple times and I've reported it to TikTok a thousand times and they tell me that they're not violating community guidelines. I need everybody and their mothers to go report that page, please and thank you. So we have two CSF specimens, one that's eleven thousand two hundred, tube number two is three hundred RBCs. And if you're in this live, whoever you are, honestly, F you, like you're not cool for friggin' repo, like using my shit without my permission and then posting it and making money off of it. Um, let's go on to TikTok. I don't even know if I'm logged into TikTok. Sorry, we're, we're taking a diversion here, guys. Not now. It's Oh, no, not this one. I'm gonna find it. My post was revi- was taken off because I My post was review, was taken off because I posted the person. I think I DM'd them, hold on. This person. Look, they have, dude, they literally went from like zero to five hundred and twenty-five. So if you guys can report this page, please. Let me unblock them and show you guys. Literally, they, they are posting all of my shit. That's crazy. Last time I checked, it was just on this one, and they posted all of this stuff, like, how, oh, I'm just so angry. I'm so angry. If you're in this friggin' chat, bro, like, honestly, go fuck yourself. That's how I feel. It's like, that's just not cool. And then people are like commenting on it, like, it's, uh, like it's me. Dude. Please report this person ASAP. This is not my page. Please report. I have to do this every day. And it's like, I don't even know, and look, they take the whole, the whole thing. Like, they literally just copy and paste everything. I don't even know how somebody does that. Like, you have a lot of time on your hands to do this. Anyway, back to being locked. That's crazy. Alright, back to the old grind here. Traumatic tap. That is correct. Level difficulty one, we know this because in the first tube, there's hella RBCs. Eleven thousand, and then in tube number two, there's only three hundred. So that's a significant decrease. That means that when they put the needle through, it was traumatic, it was bloody. If it was a subarachoid hemorrhage, what would you see? Would it still be the same way with a lot of RBCs in tube one and less than tube two, or would it be the same across all? Right, Esmeralda, Desara, exactly, exactly. Alright, all of the following cells are considered granulocytes except what? My YouTube name is Marilyn the Scientist. I'm Marilyn the Scientist across all platforms, by the way. Yes, lymphocyte is not a granulocyte. This is a level five difficulty, so neutrophils, basophils, eosinophils, they're considered granulocytes because they contain granules in their cytoplasm. Lymphs and monos are not considered granulocytes. Alright, ooh, this is a good one. What cell population is gated in this peripheral blood sample case analyzed by flow cytometry? So if we don't know this one, um, I know, I know, I get them wrong too, Desara, Alicia, uh, Esmeralda, I know. So what you do is we look at flow cytometry for um, WBC differential or WBC differentiation. Look at images. And here's a good one. This is off Sizzmax by itself. So lymph is over here. Kennedy, you telling me, girl, I'll never look at that stuff. Monos is over here. Neutrophils is over here. Eos is over here. So we go back to this question. What might this be, this red one? That's kind of hard for me to go back and forth here. I think it might be lymphs. I'm pretty sure it's lymphs. But based on the chart that Sizzmax just showed me, I would go lymphs now. Let's see if this is the correct answer. Alright, let's do it. Okay, so, oh, look, see, this is why I love Lab CE because it's giving, it's giving us what we need, like, as an explanation. So in flow cytometry, right, right? Isn't this great feedback? Let me, let me, like, give some, yeah, here, take screenshot, everybody screenshot this. I'm gonna give some points to Lab CE for this one, because sometimes their feedback is a little, it's a little shaky. Alright. Quantes says he works in flow cytometry. Oh, we're looking at scatter plots right now. Something about one of the axes, axis is indicating size, right? So there's side scatter, it says side scatter equal, equals granularity, less granular to more granular, granular. Then forward scatter, which is the size. So we have granularity and size. The smaller is down here, the larger is up here, right? Lymphs are smaller, less gran- granular. Um, monos, larger, so they'd be up here, less granu- granular. And then we have all of our neutrophils up here, right? Cause they're larger, like on the same, sorry, they're more granual, granular, and a little bit larger, right? And then our eos and besos might be out here, because they're a little bit smaller, but still quite granular. Does that make sense to everybody? This is a great friggin' chart. Ten points to Lab CE for this one. Alright. Okay, here is another hemoglobinopathy question. This drawing depicts which alpha chain genotype? Alpha thalassemia major, which is Hydropsfetalus, alpha thalassemia intermediate, intermediate hemoglobin H disease, or alpha thalassemia trait, or silent carrier? Excuse me. We have an A, we have a B. We have a B, A or B, B. Okay. We can go B, because that's where the majority of our things are coming from, right? We're looking at these, we're looking at this, something's missing, something's missing. Right, okay, so here's the feedback. The genotype pictured is, we have three out of the four alpha J, alpha chains, or alpha gene loci missing. This is known as alpha thalassemia intermediate or hemoglobin H disease. That is, three of the four alpha genes are deleted. These patients tend to form tetras of your beta globin chains known as hemoglobin H. Alpha thalassemia major or Hydropsfetalus occurs when all four, um, all four alpha genes are deleted. These patients produce hemoglobin Bart, right? Bart doesn't like babies, which is the formation of gamma globin tetras. This condition is incompatible with, like, you know, it's crazy, I read an article, this was like, um, when was this? This was a while ago, about um, a woman who delivered uh, a baby with Hydropsfetalus and kept the baby on just like chronic transfusions. Um. I'm not quite sure, I understand the pictures. Oh, yeah, yeah, let's, let's look at this picture, right? So I think this is, what is this Greek symbol? Is this like epsilon, or is this capital Delta or capital Gamma? I don't know. And this is A two, but there's a, a delete, I'm not seeing two alpha chains, right? I'm only seeing one here, and then there's like another black deletion here. Let's see, what are the other, what are the other feedback here? Alpha thalassemia trait is the deletion of two of the four alpha genes. Okay, well, it looks like two out of the four are deleted here. So you might get that. The silent carrier has one alpha gene deleted, they tend to have no clinical manifestation of a hemoglobinopathy. Alright, so let's, let's try to interpret this picture. Um, do they have? How? How would I, how would I do that? How to interpret photos of, or, is it, yeah? Photos of genetic loci for thalassemia for ASCP. Let's, let's see if they give us, if not, actually, you know what I can do? We can go hemoglobin H has an increase of A two and F. I think. Right, yeah, so I guess there's, there's. Is there, is there supposed to be one here, one here, and one here? And that's why they're saying three out of the four are deleted? No, say, I think, I think that's what it's saying, like, they're supposed to be like A two, A two, and then what, just regular, regular alpha, alpha? I'm, I think I'm confusing you guys. We're gonna let me go to my courses. Why is this not letting me click? Alright, Media Lab, are you frozen right now? Let's come right back to this really quick. I know I have one on thalassemias, like a course on thalassemias. No, not that one. We want to get out of exam simulator and go to my courses, because I'm pretty sure they have pictures of it that explain it better. Not beta thalassemias, I need alpha thalassemias. Hold on, chat, give me one second. Available courses. Hematology. Alpha thalassemia. Add to my courses. And then let's go back to home. Alpha thals, girl, we want to click play. And we want to do the PDF. Okay, let's scrolly, scrolly, scroll, okay. Alright, here's pictures. So genetics of alpha thalassemia. Chromosome sixteen contains the genetic codes for the Zeta, oh, this is Zeta, Zeta, in the alpha hemoglobin chains. Each chromosome has two loci, alpha chains, A one and A two. This equals four gene loci coding for the alpha hemoglobin chain. See the image for a visual representation, right? So we have Zetas, two A twos, and two A ones. The genotypic uh notation of alpha thalassemia is an A, or for alpha representing the presence of an alpha locus. A minus sign represents the deletion of a locus, right? So as notation for a normal number of alpha loci is AA slash AA. As mentioned, alpha chains are found, can I post this document? Kind of unfortunate you have to know the representation to interpret those pictures clearly, though, but I get it. Yeah, yeah, it's kind of weird, I know. So I don't know that I'm legally allowed to post this document, um, because it's like proprietary information of Lab CE. But if you have Lab CE, Media Lab, you can go in, or you can just take a screenshot of what I have here. Um, yeah, because this says it's like prohibited, including electronic and print, don't make cop, copies, copyright and licensing, so I, I'm not trying to be a good girl and I'll post it, but anyway. Let's go back to this, so normal chromosome sixteen. Chromosome sixteen, alpha thalassemia silent, right? This is silent. There's one missing. Alpha thalassemia minor, we have two missing. We just see A two and Zeta. Alpha thalassemia minor heterozygous, so in the heterozygous, so this is homozygous state, it's on um, either one of, like, both of the loci. And then on this one, it's on the same one. Then we go to uh, alpha thalassemia intermediate, which is three out of the four gone, which is, I think, the one that we're seeing, right? In our uh, question here, let's go back to the question, exam simulator. And we're in the middle of an exam simulator. Play. Right, so this one was giving alpha thalassemia intermediate hemoglobin H disease. Hi, meo deus, where did it just go? Here. So this is, this is what we're looking at. And then alpha thalassemia major, they ain't got no alphas, none there, all gone. So very uh, important to know these, and probably something you'll see on the ASCP. They love to test thalassemias, they love to test hemoglobinopathies, they love to test leukemias and anemias. Those are your heavy, heavy, heavy hitters. So here's one, take a nice screenshot of this. I'll give you a few seconds, alpha thalassemia genetics and clinical condition summary table. Right? Nice screenshot of this. Alright, everybody good? Can I keep scrolling and go back to the questions? Alright, so, next. Identify the cells at the arrows, spherocytes, giant platelets, polychromatophilic erythrocytes, or artifacts. Yes, queens, let's go. Polychromatophilic, right? Because they're kind of purply, purplish, poly meaning multiple chromatophilic colored erythrocytes. They are known as reticulocytes, they have a blue gray appearance when compared to other RBCs in the field, often larger in size than mature RBCs, and either lack central power or have a diminished central power. Power, spherocytes um, appear smaller than mature RBCs. We know what a spherocyte is, we know what a giant platelet is, and we know that artifacts don't really have, like, a consistent shape. Oh, my mama, you want some love? Oh, my baby, your, why your eyes are so watery? Okay, next. Identify the nucleated blood cell seen in this image. This is a lymph, a SEG, a band, or a mono. I think this is very subjective. What you saying, B, sorry, a bandy? See, for me personally, I, as a lab tech, would call this a SEG. Because it's not perfectly in a C shape, in my opinion. This might be kind of folded right here. And also, there's these little thingies coming off of it, yeah, yeah, I would go with SEG, but I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure, they, like, A, Lab C might call this a band, so I don't know. Yeah, Media Lab. Yeah, see, they would call that the immature, I would not call that a band, but I think as you grow in your career and depending on the way, girl, get your boom boom off the screen. Um, depending on what your facility likes, what your hem leader, hematology supervisor likes, they might want you to be more conservative, calling more segs, like, unless you see a perfect C or a perfect S shape, that's the way that I was taught. Other than that, it's a SEG. Alright, but in this case, this is calling band. Call it a band. Identify the inclusion indicated by the arrow. Oh, we just went over this one. Yes, 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 yes. A kabot ring. A kabot ring. That was a level one. Alright, guys, how did we do? Damn! Ben, we got a nine to six, that's some good shit right there. I'm gonna tell y'all, I'm very proud, let me not cry. I've been very emotional today because of my therapy, but I am very proud of you guys. I feel like y'all have a really good understanding of hematology. I don't know about that micro stuff, but um, we could do a little, oh, we're supposed to do parasitology today, let's do parasitology after this. But very good on your hematology stuff. If there are some things that you don't know, just make sure to employ the help of ChatGPT, employ the help of your handy dandy internet, and try to figure it out, right? Me personally, I go to ChatGPT and I say, hey, explain what sideroblastic anemia is to a three-year-old. And it does a really good job of, of explaining it in a way that is understandable and uh, relatable. And if you still don't understand, say, I need more understanding, and it'll give you more of an understanding, and then do more practice questions in that, so. When am I doing another free session? Probably in like a month. I do it maybe like once every four to six weeks. I do these every single week in the Inner Circle community. I've been doing about two a week for the last couple of weeks, because I've had a lot of students take their exams. So if you are interested in joining, oh, Lean, you got it, you got it, girl. If you guys are interested in joining the Inner Circle of Microscope Views, just head over to um, the link that's in my bio of Instagram and Facebook, and you can join there. It's ninety-seven dollars a month. And exactly what we're doing right here is what we do every single week in the Inner Circle. So now, let's go and do some parasitology questions. Do we just, let's just do microscopic and macroscopic um, identification? Because I feel like that is um, always really the issue. So this is why I like Lab CE. And we go to analytic procedures for parasitology, and we're gonna do microscopic and macroscopic identification. Let's try to get fifteen in, because I have another call to go to in about twenty minutes. Twenty-ish minutes. Alright, which plasmodium species tend to infect any red blood cell regardless of the age of the cell? I love you, mama. I love you, mama. Oh, wow, we're getting a lot in the chat. So we know that plasmodium vivax likes young cells, so we, we can get rid of that one. We're getting a lot of plasmodium falciparum, I'm pretty sure it's plasmodium falciparum too. That one is just like, I don't give a fuck, I'm gonna infect you, brother, like, I'm coming for you. Okay, and that is. Okay, and that is correct. Falciparum and Nolassey will infect any red cell at any age because of this, heavy infections may result, right? Falciparum don't give a hoot, they say, I am coming to take your red blood cells and make them my own, impregnate them. Plasmodium alva- ovali and vivax, they like the young ones, right? So I call these two the P E D O P H I L E. I don't know if I'm allowed to say that on Instagram and TikTok, but um. Somebody said I'm here for the cat content. What's up, Israel? I'm giving you a shout out finally. Um. But yeah, the uh vivax and ovali are the PEDOs of the uh plasmodiums. And then plasmodium malaria infects older red cells. Malaria is a cougar, okay? Malaria is a cougar. Ovali and vivax are responsible for relapses. That, I believe that is true. They go like dormant. Ooh, this is a good one. Seven year old male presented to the clinic with mild abdominal pain, diarrhea and nausea. Patient history revealed that the child lives in a rat and insect infected shack where sanitation practices were poor. A stool sample was collected and submitted for open parasite examination. Yes, Israel. Uh numerous suspicious worms were seen in the stool concentrate that measures sixty by seventy-five micrometers. Um this child is most likely infected with what? We're getting a lot, okay, so. This is what, some type of hookworm, we're seeing the little hook lit thingies, right? So what two can we get rid of? It's down to one of the hymen elepsis, right? Getting a lot of bees, why are we calling it dimenuda and not nana? What is the difference? Size, the shape, the filament. Okay, alright, let's go for it. That is correct, right, so you guys, you guys are pretty good with this. So correct answer is hymen elepsis dimenuda. It lacks polar phin- filaments but is otherwise indistinguishable from nana. Light infections with either species are generally asymptomatic, but large numbers of adult worms can cause abdominal pain, diarrhea, irritability and headache. Akinococcus granulosus egg, granulosus eggs are rarely seen in samples. As the infections are typically identified by observing the hyated cyst in tissue. Dipolythium caninum eggs appear in groups surrounded by a membrane protective coat known as egg packets. This in uh individual eggs are generally smaller than those observed in this image measuring between twenty to forty. Now again, if we go to the school community and the um. In my community on paid community, wait, microbiology, I don't know if I've. Posted this to the other one, but look at us go, the ultimate guide to parasitology. I got pictures, I got names, I got sizes, I got whether it's pathogenic or not, what's that other one? If it's called pinworm whipworm, if it's got an operculum, if it's got a whatever, very important. If you guys want this, hop on over to the other school community, I don't know that I, did I post it in the free community, I might have. Alright, identify this suspicious form shown in the image, uh found in a stool specimen measuring fifty micrometers. Tennyx species hookworm ascaris lumbrecoides or fascicolipatica. Alright, y'all are quick with it. Yes, ma'am, this is ascaris lumbrecoides. Um roundworm. What is all, what is the uh specific name for roundworm? Or the scientific name for roundworm? Cuz people get confused between cestodes, traumatodes, nematodes, what is roundworm? Yes, nematode, nematode. Um so it is oval shaped mammalated coat. Wee, 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 coat and semi organized egg contents. Nasty toad, exactly, exactly, like why the hell do I need to know this stuff? Alright, so tinea species or tapeworm eggs are round, yellow or brown, uh contain a thick wall with radial striations. And there's six hooked onkosphere maybe visible in eggs passed in the stool. Yo, the tinea species always has me like really queasy. Hookworm is a, is a roundworm. Thin colorless shell and pass in the stool, it contains four to eight cells, hookworm eggs are oval, a little bit, not about the same sizesh. Fascicolipatica, a fluke, they're big. Them joints is big. Measuring approximately one thirty to sixty to ninety, epsooidal, or sorry, ellipsoidal in shape. Yellow brown in color, indistinct operculum, fascicola eggs are unembryonated when found in stool. And that was a level nine and you guys got that just like off bugs, I love it. Microscopic examination of peripheral blood may be. Which one is the intestinal one? We have tapeworms for sure, hookworms or or hookworms that are under the roundworms. Oh, here's another good one, sorry, um what is it called, wordsology? Oh, Zai, come on, girl. If you guys need a nice flowchart. This right here, wordsology, if you have not been on this person's website, I'm giving them um a shout out right now. This is really nice. If you're like, what is a, an amoeba versus a flagellata, cilia, sporozoa, a nematode? The only thing that it doesn't give you is like this if they're asking intestinal versus extra intestinal, or do they? Oh yeah, intestinal, all of these, extra intestinal, meaning like it's either in the blood or in the um in in a muscle. In whatever, in the liver, who knows? But back to the question, I'm sorry. Intestinals, I think all of these are intestinal, no? Ascaris tinea hookworm and no fascicola is uh, this is the liver fluke. A, one of the liver, Chinese liver fluke is what uh what you call it? Let me get to the flukes. Intestinal fluke is busky, hepatica is a liver fluke, and then the Chinese liver fluke is this cloruncus one. Cloruncus and senensis. Alright, let's see what we got, microscopic examination of peripheral blood may be diagnostic for infection with each of the following parasites except what? Ooh, good job, where would you find this one? Where do we find this one? If it's not in the blood, yes, Kennedy. Ten points to Kennedy for the day, right, trichinella spiralis, this is the one that you find in the striated muscle. Back to here. Trichinella spiralis, this is what it looks like. An H and E stain in the muscle. India muscle, level one difficulty. Suspicious form zone in this trichrome stain energy measures thirteen micrometers was recovered from stool sample. There was no peripheral chromatin, what was the identification of this parasite? You do not want it, but I appreciate you. Yeah, we definitely don't want trichinella, no, thank you. I'm good off that. Ooh, my shoulder is hurting. We're getting a lot of As in the chat, A, 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 A. These ones are typically a lot bigger, right? Iodamiba is a little bit smaller, I would go with iodamiba as well, plus this little like, what they call ball and socket, isn't that the one that has the ball and socket nucleus? Yes, okay, right. Single blunt pseudopod, large eccentric karyosome, large nucleus, lack of peripheral chromatin, trophozoite of entamoeb coli is larger. Um entamoeb hissolytica is an average size, endolymic nana shares similar characteristics with iodamiba. Excuse me, an important differentiating characteristic of the significantly small uh is the significantly smaller size of endolymic maxnada, so. Endolymic maxnada is extra tiny. Iodamiba is a little bit bigger. Then we got. Histolytica, which is a little bit bigger, and then equalize a big old joint. On to the next one. Come on now, Media Lab, don't fail me now. You are taking up my whole seat here, boo. Damn, we ain't got nobody on TikTok, we ain't got nobody, we got two people on Instagram. We are live on Zoom. Alright, Media Lab acting like a little. I don't know why it does this, anybody else have this problem with Media Lab? They're pretty good parasitology, man. Probably. This, this is hard stuff, man. It is not easy, it is not easy. Yo, brother, come on, Media Lab. Might have to exit out, oh, okay, there we go, okay, so I'm not the only one that experiences this. Mama, you cannot put your face on my screen like that, girl. Yes, my baby. Alright, let's look at this one. Trichrome stained organism measuring fifteen was found in a stool sample, what is the ID of this parasite? I know, Stevie, you know how I feel about parasitology. Media Lab been acting up, getting a lot of As for histolytica. Yes, I would agree with that, trophozoite stage of e histolytica. Central location of the karyosome and the engulfed RBC, look at that. Can identified as e histolytica and not entamoeb just bar, which is a commensal. That shows the same characteristics of e histolytica minus the engulfed RPCs in the trophozoite stage. E histolytica typically has a central karyosome with fine even peripheral chromatin. Right? Entamoeb coli, trophozoites have a blot light karyosome and eccentric nuclear chromatin, they don't ingest red cells, so. Histolytica likes red cells. Thank you, thank you, oh, thank you, I like, I got this shirt in Japan and thank you for uh. Calling my cat cute, I love my kiddo, my little boo boo. Alright, let's continue. Fifty-five year old female, I'd rather a parasite over mycology, not gonna lie, I don't know much about mycology, girl, you telling me. I would much rather parasitology over mycology. Canidia fours, canidius fours, micro sporangia four, high, high fee. You couldn't tell me, alright, this lady went to China, reported to her physician complaining of diarrhea and abdominal count cramps. CBC, CMP and OMP were ordered, CBC revealed pronounced eosinophilia, I mean, I wonder why, she's got a frigging parasite of some sort. The CMP and stool cultures. Yeah, Anna, I know, mycology is literally atrocious. CMP and stool culture were unremarkable, OMP revealed the suspicious form approximately one forty by eighty, this is big. This patient is most likely infected with what? Getting a lot of As. We're getting some Cs, or one C, alright, so we definitely know it's not ascaris lumbrecoides. I also wouldn't go with this one, I mean, it has kind of like an operculum, but not in the way that this. Diphilothrium latum egg. The diphil- diphilobratham latum does. Um. We're getting a paragonimus westermani. We're getting a lot of IDKs, I don't. Need to review these parasites, I barely remember, yeah, why are we saying A, we're saying C? I mean, the, I think the key here is China. I said China, like our uh, I got an office right now, I said China, was wild. Um but we can look at both of these and then make our decision, right, or we can go, give me, give me a tiebreaker, do we wanna go A or do we wanna go C? Alright, Lean says A, so we're gonna go A. Alright, so it was fascicola, right, I'm thinking Chinese liver fluke. That's where I'm getting, that, that's why I was saying China, right? So fascicola or fasciolopsis eggs are correct because these eggs are big as hell. They're indistinguishable and uh the recovery of an adult worm is necessary to speciate these organisms. Paragonimus westermani eggs are incorrect because these patients infected typically suffer from respiratory difficulties. Respiratory difficulties, right? Organism, I think this is the one where you would get it um like through a sputum, you would recover it through sputum. Yeah, the lung fluke, thank you. The organism produces eggs similar to those shown here that are recovered in sputum specimens. Eggs are pretty big, but not as large as this, although it has an operculum. An operculum. The operculum is flattened with raised shoulders, right, alright, so let's look at paragonimus westermani. Where did my skull thing go? Paragonimus westermani. Think it's down here somewhere, oh, not that far. Paragonimus, right here. Paragonimus westermani, this is what it looks like. Respiratory fluke, lung fluke. Found in human sputum. For perculum and the size, operculum and the size. And then back to this one, diphilot- di- diphilobothrium latum. Diphilobratham latum. D latum is the one that bears get from eating contaminated fish? That's a great question. I know how we get it. Yeah, I mean, I could assume that, right, it's a freshwater fish tapeworm. This one has obvious operculum, right, can see a little like egg cap, pop in the cap. Oh, this is the one that does hang from their butt, yes. Eggs or proglottids are found in the intestine, over our oval to almond shaped, thin outer shell with a non-shoulder to perkin limit one end. Yellow brown eggs pass in the stool. Scollex is long and narrow with dorsovalveolar groove surrounded by lateral lip like folds. Let's get a picture of this diphilo. Oh, I put datum instead of latum, sorry, guys. Honestly, these things are long, um. Oh, this is like the extra long one. Worm hanging from bear's butt. Yeah, here we go, there's your tapeworm. So now we'll never forget that a bear. Diphilothrum bla- blatum, latum, this is what it looks like. Alright. And we know what a scars lumberquities looks like, alright, almost done, oh, you can just tell me what this is. Bear booty hole worms, yes. Alright, so we have missionary worker returned from Africa in a small rural community, weight loss, weakness, abdominal pain, diarrhea. Bloody CBC eosinophilia. This is very, 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 if you don't know this. I don't know what to tell you. Trick, trick. Trickity, trick, 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 right, not trickemonis, but trick, trick. We know, so this is what whipworm, this is pinworm. These ones look like a deflated uh football. Giardia, we know what giardia looks like, and we already know what a scars lumberquities looks like. And if you don't. Do these, oh, what were we just talking about? What were we just talking about? Yes. Pinworm. Pinworm, this is another one that likes to be by your booty hole, not a bear's booty hole, but a human booty hole, okay? Trick, trick, is our whipworm, and so we just saw. Scarus lumberquities, we knew it, we know what that looks like, pseudo parasite, clearly it's not a pseudo booty buddies. That's hilarious. Clearly not a pseudo parasite, this is a for real, for real parasite. Alright, ooh, look at this one. Identify this form that was found in a stool concentrate measuring thirty-three micrometers in diameter. Yeah. Some type of, some type of tinea species. Your beef or pork tapeworm species, right? Brown or yellow identifying the presence of typical hexacanth embryo. Hexacanth embryo, right? Presence of a uh that, oh, protected by, sorry, hexacanth embryo radially striated sheath, my bad. Hexacanth embryo. Radial striated sheath. Alright, and that was a level four, I know for sure on the exam they ask about preparation, so I would make sure to uh review that, oh, for sure, yeah, like. Um, like the, the stains, the um OMP stains are fixating. What do you use to fix it, the different types of alcohol, whatever, whatevers? She said, yeah, it looks like a booty hole. What type of booty holes you be looking at, Stevie, I'm just playing. What organism with this characteristic, characteristic morphology that measures fifteen by eight uh maybe recovered from a stool sample? We got, we got a C. Giardia. It's very tiny for sure. Getting a D, D. I might go D too. Go D. Hey, was D. Alright, so the, the thing about giardia is that it's got eyes, right? It's got big eyes. This one only has one. Keys to identifica- identification of this chilomastix mastolytrophocytes include a spiral groove when seen a single nucleus. Fibral cytosome, which is often difficult to see. I don't see that on here at all, and they're quite small. Um, Trichomonas. This is so nasty. Trichomonas tenax you find in your mouth. That's why you need to brush your teeth, you nasties. Enterimonus hominis are small as well. One side of the body flattened and the posterior flagella extends free posteriorly or laterally. And then Giardia duodalenesis, um, trophozoites are pear shaped as well. Um, but the size is a little bit bigger. They'll have a sucking disc that occupies one half to three fourths of the ventral surface. That's level five. Good, 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 twelve to fifteen we have. Oh, here's another one. Illustrated in this photograph is a high power view of a seventy-micrometer ovum with a thin, smooth outer shell, inner membrane, and containing a hexacanth embryo. So what two can we get rid of just based off that? Ovum is indigenous primarily in rats and mice found and rarely found in human fe- species. But when found, the infected person usually has minimal symptoms with heavy infections, particularly in those who are immune suppressed, abdominal pain, um, diarrhea and anal pruritus may be experienced. What is the presumptive identification of this ovum? Okay, B, 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 we can go B. Or A, we can go B. Alright, okay, cool. So hymenolepsis. Diminuta, so the reason why I was saying what two can you get rid of? Hexacanth embryo, cool, um, and it doesn't also have, you know, that radial sheath extending out of it like a tenuous species would. No polar finaments, filaments. So uncommon tapeworm, so this one, uncommon in humans, typically found in rodents. But it can infect humans. Oh, the rats and the mice gave it away. That too, rats and mice. Diminuta, diminuta. Diminuta is dirty rat. Oh, that works. Hey. Maya with the, uh, with the sayings over here. Alright, so, um, infects humans after contamination of grains and flowers with rat feces. Symptoms include diarrhea, anorexia, nausea, headache, dizziness. Bap, 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 the size, smooth shell, inner hexacanth membrane containing three pairs of hooklets. See that? Hook, hook, hook. Nanas incorrect, smaller. They have bipolar filaments extending from each side of the inner hexacanth membrane, and we knew that these two were incorrect, right? On to the next one. We got a fifty-eight-year-old male who recently returned from the US from an extensive overseas business trip to Africa. Man, they always go to Africa. I love my, my continent, but goodness, I have Africa actually tatted on my arm if you guys didn't know. Um, it's just sad that we have so many friggin' things that we can get over there. Initially, he thought it was just the flu, but his symptoms persisted. Blood sample was drawn, sent to the lab. What does he got going on? He's got malaria area. He's definitely got malaria. Reason wise, we're seeing plasmodium species, we're seeing ring forms, ring forms, right? Within the cells. Leishmania, leishmaniasis. Um, you're getting it from sandflies, sandflies. I don't think you see sandflies over in, uh, Africa. Um, Chagas disease, Japanosoma cruisy. You wouldn't get Chagas disease over in Africa, but you might get it from, what is the other one? Japanosoma brucy, right? Get African sleeping sickness, and then toxoplasma is found in the kitty cats. Alright, two more illustrated in this high phonomicrograph of the large one hundred and forty-micrometer ovum in a stool specimen. Right? Adults reside in the portal veins of the large intestines where ova are discharged into the lumen of the feces, low-grade diarrhea, maybe present select the species of fluke related to this ovum. Getting a lot of bees, 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 right, 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 right. Why is it not hematobium? Where do you find hematobium? Alright, yeah, that lateral spine, correct? Where do we find hematobium? We don't find it in the stool, we find it? We find it in the urine, correct, right? It's not fascicola hepatica, we know that for sure. And then Japanos, shystosoma, japanica. Which one had the nucleus at the end of the tail, T brucy or cruisy? That's a great question. I cannot remember off the top of my head. Well, I think it's, uh, cruisy. Is it cruisy? Hold on, let's scroll down and look. I think, I think it's cruisy, right? Let's just double, let me, let me, let me double check. Not the tapeworm from the bear butt. Um, nucleus in T cruisy. Um, and close by, double, it is in, okay, DNA, organa, okay, subcompo- yeah, but where is it? Where on organism? Typically between the post, okay, T cruisy, the nucleus is centrally located versus T. Are you licking my face right now? T brucy, it says near the center of the cell. Wait, I'm confused. Dude. Yeah, let's just look at images, cuz I'm freaking confused. T cruisy versus T brucy. Alright, yeah, so cruisy has it at the end, and brucy got it different. Brucy in the center. It's really difficult to see. Has a large canetoplast found at the posterior end of the cell. Is that what they're calling the canetoplast, or is this what they're calling the canetoplast? I thought this was the canetoplast and this is the nucleus. Pretty, I thought this was the nucleus. I'm pretty sure. Give me some more pictures. Isn't this crazy? Yeah, this, this definitely has to be the nucleus, and this is the canetoplast. Am I tripping, or am I confusing you guys? Well, get your tail out of your, out of my mouth, you weirdo. Undulating membrane, small canetoplast. Oh, so is, so this is the nucleus? Anybody else confused? Dude, Zion, I'm, I'm gonna put you in the frying pan in about two seconds. Let's see this one. So small canetoplast, which is this. Large canet- so this is the canetoplast? And this is the nucleus? So both of them have nu- nuclei in the center, or in the center, and then the canetoplast are both at the end? Really, the issue is like the shape of them, right? So brucy is like the squiggly, squiggly one, and then cruisy is the C one. Anybody else? Anybody else know? I don't do parasitology often to, um, to be sure of this one. Hold on now. We're looking at pictures. So this is saying nucleus. Alright, we got a nucleus here. Side by side comparison, so the nucleus in T brucy is in the center. And here is in the center. Nuclei in, in regard to the tail is for the falarii. How do you, how do you mean? So I guess they have, they both have centrally located nuclei. And then terminally centered canetoplast? Yeah, size is definitely smaller on brucy, size is bigger on T cruisy, and really, it's the shape. The biggest differentiator is the shape. Brucy is giving. Thank you, Megan. Let's look at this photo. Alright, so we have, we're not gonna worry about leishmania. Nucleus is in the center, canetoplast is at the end. Cruzy. We got nucleus in the center too. Canetoplast is centrally located too? This is, this is honestly some tough stuff here, cuz I feel like these are extra close, but then when you look at like pictures like this, they're not that close, right? Like, this is the end of the organism. We need a, we need a parasitologist in, in the chat right now. Hashtag help. Brucy, nucleus, canetoplast, nucleus, canetoplast. Biggest difference is the shape in this undulating membrane here. What else did people say? Alright, alright, let's keep going. What did we say? Mansoni, we are mansoni. Reason why is because hematobium we find in the urine, this is found in the stool. Fascicola hepatica is a liver fluke, something you wouldn't find in the stool. Shystosoma japanica is much smaller, right? Mansoni, we knew that, uh, swimmer's itch, cuz when you're in, uh, water and it just like gets you, it's so gross. Ugh, shystosoma hematobium is incorrect, we know that, um, pointed spike being derived from the shell. Um, at the narrow terminal end of the ovum, rather from the side, right? Uh, rarely observed in stool, but in the urine, the adult flukes reside in the portal veins of the urinary bladder. Again, um, it's got a, hepatica has a non-shouldered operculum, narrow me- okay, projecting spine, I seen, blah, blah, blah. Shystosoma, we know it's smaller. And it's got smooth outer shell rather than, uh, rather than as a pointed, projected pointed spike. I can't speak today. Alright, number four, or level four. Last one. Adult flukes related to this one hundred-micrometer ovum typically inhabit, let's make this smaller, the lung parenchyma. The lung parenchyma. We don't even need to go further, but we will. Overmost commonly found in sputum specimens, we just learned this. Diagnostic features include a slightly thickened shell with a prominent shouldered operculum as seen at the lower left end. A developing larva within the shell that is retracting from the inner margin, leaving a clear space. Infections with the fluke are endemic with the Orient West Africa. South and Central America may be observed in patients who have traveled to one of these regions. Human infections occurs following digestion of poorly cooked crab meat or crayfish. What's crayfish? Contaminated with the metacircure, metac- metacircure. I can't speak. Intermittent chest pain and cough with occasional spitting up of blood or hemo- hemoptysis may be experienced after infection, and then from the choices below, select the trematode. What is a trematode? Saying crayfish is a sin, how, how do you say it? I thought it was crawfish. Yeah, that's what I thought it was crawfish. What the hell is a crayfish? Yes, we knew this one. Paragonimus. The lung fluke. Chloruncus sinensis is incorrect, we know Chinese liver fluke, fascicola hepatica is, um, another liver fluke, and this is another one, but this is the one that we see. This is the lung, the lung fluke. Alright. Hey, good job, guys. Another ninety-three. So what, we got a ninety-three and a ninety-six today. I am very, very, very proud of you guys. Um, this has been amazing. I am like so glad that I got to do this for you guys. I'm glad that I got two in this week. Um, I'm really glad that, you know, some people had off yesterday and today, or just yesterday or today. Um, it's been really good. I hope that you guys will join me in the other community. It's ninety-seven dollars. I know for some people that might be a little bit much, but for the amount of value that we're providing, like, if you got value out of this and you want more of like my crazy self explaining things to you, like going deep diving. If you have not passed your exam yet, if you're having trouble, dude, just hop on over to the other community. I'm telling you, it's gonna help a lot. It's, it's a community full of students who have been there, done that. Um, there's people who have passed their exam, failed their exam, came back, passed their exam. Um, definitely come over there, and if you have any other questions, um, definitely post it in the school community. Thank you, thank you, guys. I appreciate you, guys. And I will probably see you in like a month-ish, um, if you take your exam, like Miss Lean. You know, wish everybody their luck. If you're taking your exam, like, post it in the community so we can all like support you. If there's anything we can do. Um, I'll try to continue to go live as much as I can. Um, I have a lot of different endeavors happening. A lot of people asking me to come speak at conventions and stuff like that, so it's been, it's kinda crazy, um, and I don't know that I've, I've mentioned to you guys yesterday, I did, uh, resign for my position as blood bank supervisor to pursue social media full-time. Um, I really wanna help get as many med techs as possible certified. It's a little mini mission of mine. Um, the name of my community is Microscope Views, and it's on, it's the link in my bio if you're, if you're on Instagram or, um, TikTok uh, asking questions. Um, but yeah, I'm doing this full-time. I'm trying to produce more content as much as I can. And I hope that I can just make your studying a little bit easier. Hopefully, you learned something here today, and I'm gonna post this back into the community. I'll also post it on YouTube, um, and probably some shorts from this too, so you can remember what the liver fluke is versus your hemoglobinopathies and all of those things, so I appreciate everyone for being here, and I will see you next time.